Okay, looks like everybody is in attendance. Six o'clock, I will call the Saturday Incorporated School Board meeting to order. Adam, do we have to go through the the reason why we're doing the meeting the way we are at the moment?
We can, but we, I think it's fine. We pretty well, and there's a governor's executive order that covers that.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure it's not something I would do every single time. All right, so before we get on to the normal opening items, I just want to state a few things. First of all, on Friday, Adam sent out an email to the whole SOU board, and that was various policies. Hopefully, everybody had an opportunity to read into those. Funny, I did notice a discrepancy, yeah, I guess a discrepancy or maybe it's like conflict between two of the policies, not both of which were sent. So the one, one of the ones that was sent by Adam was policy BDD, this board superintendent relationship, and another similar one is policy BBA. And that's school board powers and duties. On BDD, there is a point number three that says the board will hold all meetings of the board in presence of the superintendent, except when his or her contract and salary under discussion. Several people made that point. Under the BBA policy, there is section E, which in part states that the meetings for the transaction of business will be held at least once in two months and shall require the attendance of the superintendent or his/her designate. So if we want to be consistent, I would suggest that this go to a policy committee. So George and Laura, sorry, not George. Steve and Laura can take these and maybe make them more consistent, so they are similar. And to be frank, I don't really care which one you guys choose, but they should probably be the same. Also, I just want to ensure there is some concerns that there's not enough information being shared. I can assure you that whenever there is information to be shared, we will relay that to the board. There is, nobody is hiding anything or keeping anything back from anybody on this board or otherwise. So when those information items are ready to be shared, they will be shared between meetings, but typically, if it's not urgent, they will just wait until the agenda that they will be discussed. Okay. And given that, we'll go right up into the other opening items. The first one will go, ask for committee updates. Anybody have any committee updates they'd like to bring up? No? Yes, Dave?
Do you want to bring this thing that Dan Waborni brought up? Now?
Why don't you go ahead and well, yeah, I would preface that by saying the Athletic Liaison Committee met with Dan, and we had a very nice discussion over the phone and talked about some of the lessons learned, if you will, from his time as AD. I thought it was a great discussion. So having said that, Dan, I mean, sorry, Dave, go ahead and say what you wanted to say.
So one of the things that's looming in the future for us is the field replacement fund. And, you know, when we the committee had made, when the committee that raised the money and put the program together, supervised it and everything, was an agreement that we would try to do it with no taxpayer dollars whatsoever. And over the last few years, there's been a deficit in money that's gone into the account, and you know, we had tasked Stan, actually, we tasked Dick Miller with it a couple of times, we tasked Dan with it a couple of times, and at some point, it needs to be addressed, and, you know, hopefully not addressed at the time when, when, when we have to finish, we have to do the field for safety reasons or something like that. Anyway, one of the, one of the things that Dan recommended, well, there are a number of things that Dan had going and which have consequently fallen by the wayside, and that he had golf tournaments and other kinds of things to raise money. And he was, you know, what he delivered on some of those, and now we can't, obviously. But one of the things he recommended, that we raise the users fees, the pro curricular activity users fees, I think it was 10 bucks?
Yeah, that's correct, yes.
And somehow put that money into the AC, ACF, the Amherst Community Foundation, one because the funds are being reserved there at the time being, for the time being. And so I don't know how we would go about enacting that. It seems to me, I'm not sure how that, that's kind of done in the budgeting process, isn't it? Adam, I don't know.
Yeah, we're going to have to begin putting some money away to cover that deficit so that we're prepared when it comes time to replace that turf, whenever that will be. There's no way around that. So I'm going to ask Michelle to make a note and to start tracking that and add that to our capital reserve for maintenance fund each year, so we can bring that back up this fall during the budget process.
Okay, my point, Adam, was how can we levy, I don't want to say tax, so that's not what it really is, but levy so the athletic user fee, when you, a football player, whoever signs up for football, they gotta pay whatever the fee is for that year, and put a $10 increase on that for the, you know, for field use and replacement. How do we, how do we go about changing that?
I'll ask Michelle to look into that, and we'll report back at our next board meeting in the fall, because I want to make sure we're, I think we can, but I'll have Michelle report back on fall.
The trouble, the trouble is that, you know, him and I both discussed this, we thought that maybe by getting it into a more recent board meeting, the newer, that we could actually implement it for the fall season, if there is a fall season, I guess that's, that's the problem.
Yep. So the, I believe the athletic fee is not set by the board, is that? Is that true? Do we, does anyone know if the athletic fee is actually set by the board, or is that set by the administration?
That's a question.
It has been brought to the board in the past for approval. Yeah. So they were, when we first initiated those fees, there were vigorous debates among the board, and we all settled on the current schedule. That was some time ago. Those fees are inflation-wise somewhat reduced from what they used to be. So I think it's, I would recommend that the administration make a recommendation, get the board to approve it.
Yeah, last time, the fees were raised, any amounts, you know, of semi-significance, both Mary Lou and myself were on the Athletic Liaison Committee, and we recommend, we worked with the AD at that time, before Dick, and figured out what the good fee structure would be, and then that was presented to the board and then and voted on to move forward. So, but I think in, to your, Adam's point, it is essentially brought up and figured out by the administration and then approved by the board.
All right, can I make a suggestion just for, for, to Dave's point of having something in place for the fall? Might the board consider a motion that authorizes me to adjust the athletic user fee based on a need to support the turf field replacement after consultation with the board liaisons to the athletic committee? In other words, the board might make a motion tonight to authorize us to make a change after I consult with the two board liaisons to the athletic committee. That way, we can get it in place for the fall.
I think that sounds like a superb idea. David, would you like to make that motion?
I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll do a quick roll call vote. David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So that passes 7-0, and so we'll give it back over to Adam to pursue as motion mentions.
We'll do.
Thank you. All right, any other committees would like to report out? Amy?
Yeah, just quickly, the communications committee, we haven't met, but there, there has been communication between Marin and Citizen, and there'll be some information going information going out, I believe, in a special edition on
Hey, George, can you mute your thing, please?
Oh, sorry, guys.
Did you guys catch what I said?
Half. Can you repeat some of it?
Sure, yeah. So there's, there's a Citizen coming out, I think, today that will have, I haven't seen it, but I believe a nice collage of all of the senior faces. And then I believe there's going to be a special edition put out that will have a lot of information on end-of-year celebrations, and Marin has been working with Cliff Hand on that. And I talked about the calendar last night at the SOU board meeting, so I won't repeat that, and also provided joint facilities last night, so I won't repeat that either unless anyone has any questions. And then the other committee is community council, but I'll wait till we get to that, and Delaney can provide an update.
Okay, great, thanks, Amy. Any other committees? Seeing none, let's move right over into the community council update. And Delaney, take it away.
So obviously, since we don't have school, we don't have any more meetings, but our, because we didn't have any elections in the spring, we are keeping intact our current executive board, because we're only losing one senior, I believe, from that. And Georgia Craven, our new moderator, just joined, but, so congratulations, congratulations to her for being elected. And then, but our executive board is here all summer if there's anything needed with community council.
Great, that's awesome. Thank you for that quick update, and I think as, I don't really know if you were on the SOU board discussion last night, but we did briefly talk about making sure that we're in alignment with our topics moving forward. One of the things Adam wants to institute is a long-term range, long, yeah, long-range planning of topics for us to discuss, so that way you guys can see that as well, and then if, as topics come up in the community council, you can kind of see where they dovetail into the topics that we'll be covering. Okay. All right, we have our first public comment session. Is there anybody from the public? And I would ask also anybody from the public who does want to raise a question or concern to use the the hand raising of the, is it the chat feature? So we can see that, and we will call on you as appropriate. All right. Okay, oh, I realized that I thought I yeah, sorry, I skipped over the, we had the principal's report last night, but I think there is an additional superintendent's report that we'd like to go over, so I'll take it away, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, just a couple of quick things. First, I want to commend Marin Petropolis, Karen Cheninas, and Adam Theryault for a wonderful scholarship event that just happened prior to the board meeting. It was a wonderful ceremony in the virtual world, and I just want to thank them for producing a great event. The other thing is we have some retirees that I want to mention by name and honor them as they, they move on and leave their legacy from Sohegan behind. So Kathleen Desmond, Scotty Ryan, John Young, Martha Rivas, and I've all had many years of service to our, our school community, and we're grateful for them. I want to take a, a longer minute to call out someone else who's also retiring, who's one of the original members of the Sohegan community, and that is Kathy White. Kathy White, who has has had a storied career with us and left an indelible mark at the Sohegan High School. If you know Kathy, if you spend any time talking to her, there is no one who has more connection and depth when it comes to the research of our educational field, the knowledge, the breadth of knowledge that Kathy has about educational practice, and what's best for what happens in instruction in our classrooms, that's Kathy White. And she brings a thoughtful approach to everything that she does. My four years of working with her have, have taught me about what it means to be methodical in research and applying that to practice in a way that benefits kids, and I'm a better person because of having known Kathy White. And so Kathy, as your last board meeting, I just wanted to take a minute and publicly thank you for your service and your many years of service to Sohegan High School, although she's turning 31 next week, so I don't know how that works out numerically, but Kathy will always have a place at Sohegan. You're always welcome to come back and visit, and we'll make sure that you always have a parking pass where you can come visit anytime you'd like. So I just wanted to thank Kathy for that. We also have, yes, and we can all clap for that, so.
Thank you, Adam. I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to be here. This is a remarkable place, and it's well-recognized for its work and for the teachers' work. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have a paraprofessional, Pam Smith, I want to mention as well, not to leave her out, and just thank you to all of our retirees who, when we started the school year, I, I know teachers, they think about that last year, they think about what it means to go through the last traditions for that final time, and many of our retirees had, all of our retirees had a different vision of what this last time through would be, and so I feel for them for this being their, their year for retirement. So that's it for my superintendent's remarks, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for indulging me.
Thank you, Adam, and I would also like to echo again the thank you to everybody that was part of the scholarship presentation this evening. I'm sure it was great. And also a special thank you again to the retirees, with a special thank you to Kathy and to Pam as well. So again, good luck with your future endeavors, and hopefully our paths will cross again some point. All right. Moving right along. Going to the consent agenda. We have eight items that are on the consent agenda. Does, do I have a motion to accept, or does anybody want to pull anything?
Make a motion to accept.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Tim?
Second. Yes, Laura?
I had a couple changes to the minutes.
Okay, are they something that you have written up by any chance that you can send to Danae?
Sure.
Okay, you can certainly go over them real quick now, but that way she doesn't have to worry about, you know, trying to rapidly.
Okay, it's on the May 19th minutes at to add a line after 2:32. That I was making a statement that some, that changing from Kelly Driscoll to Mike Perry on community council should be discussed at the next meeting. Since then, I believe that's been resolved. Community council can update on that, but at that meeting. And then 297, I was talking about Zoom and that we should research Zoom. That's all, at 298.
Okay. Great. So we've essentially pulled the minutes for the 19th, and they have now been amended, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Make a motion.
Okay, Amy, and do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we'll go roll call. David?
Yes.
Okay, Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So those consent agenda has been accepted as amended. All right, move over to policy JL CJ. We looked at that on the May 11th meeting for the first time. Anybody have anything else to? Any concerns or questions about it, or are we ready to accept it as written? No questions?
I'm ready to make a motion to accept. Well, I stepped on George, I think.
I'm sorry, I had a quick question. Now, those policies, are those amendments to existing policies, or are they brand-new policies? Because as I go through them, you know, depending on what time of day I'm going through them, it could either be a very long afternoon or evening. So I kind of like to kind of gleam and try to get the sense of, okay, what should I focus on?
I think I'll let Steve answer that question.
The ones we just adopted from the consent agenda, JF ABD was an amendment, DAF was new, and IJL was an amendment. And the one we're now discussing, JL CJ, concussions, that's new.
Okay, any other questions, comments?
Thanks, Steve.
Oh, David, you have your hand up?
Yeah. I talked to Steve about this earlier, but when these, like DAF, that one is a, that one, you know, is a very, very long document that requires a lot of intense reading if you really want to read it. And I called Steve about it, he basically said, if we want to collect federal money, we have to do this. That simplified my decision a lot. You know, and if there's a brief summary on some of these things that accompanies the, the, you know, some of the, especially the long ones, and what's changed, and, you know, we, you know, you could use, you know, track changes too, but I know that Steve doesn't like that, that's fine. But that would curtail some of maybe George's questions on this kind of thing, and it would certainly take the stress off of George and, and myself.
Yeah, I know, Dave, I promised you I would do summaries for these, and then I forgot. And so I think, I think I will adjust my next comment to Danae. When, when you're creating the agenda, if there are policies on them, can you ask me for like a one-line summary to put in for the board members? So that, because I, I actually don't know what's going to be on the agenda until I get the agenda myself. So if Danae can consult with me on this, we can get one-line summaries up for everybody in advance, and then Dave will be happy, and George will be happy, and probably everyone else will be happy.
Yeah, okay, that's, I think that makes good sense.
That's not the goal, but I appreciate it.
Okay. So well, I think we're back to making a motion to accept or to pass this policy.
I'll make the motion if I didn't already.
You start, you started to.
Yeah, to adopt JL CJ, concussions and, and head injuries.
Thank you. And Amy, a second, thank you. We'll do a roll call vote again. Dave?
Yes, ten yes.
Eve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Laura, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So that policy JL CJ is adopted. Thank you all. Okay, um, the next on the agenda is a transcript update, and I would like to pass that over to Adam and then over to Christine. So go ahead, Adam.
Thank you. Yeah, Christine will carry the mantle for this one for us, but I just wanted to frame this by thanking our board, our community, our parents, our faculty, and our community council for all having such a strong voice in the process of coming to this night, this evening. So we've talked a lot about this transcript and what it means over the last many months of board meetings. And as you'll recall, we set out a process by which we would involve all of our various stakeholder groups. Delaney, correct me if I'm wrong, but community council reviewed and approved this transcript on its way to the school board. And so this evening is our, as we had planned, our final stop in adopting this transcript for the class of 2024. So very much look forward to the board's questions, but are hoping that we have this approved tonight, so we have plenty of time to get this in front of parents prior to their students starting as freshmen in the fall. So Christine has a two- or three-hour presentation. I've asked her to extend it to four hours, so Christine, you've got the floor until 10:25, go.
Perfect, thank you. I should be able to make it in that amount of time. And just let me know if I'm having any connectivity issues with my audio. I can try turning video off. Adam, can you enable screen sharing so I can bring up the presentation?
Yes, just one second. There you go.
Thank you. And I do also have Karen Cheninas here, who will help me present as well, and Tim Cottrow, one of our school counselors, is with us, and Georgia Craven, who will be our community council moderator next year, but was deeply involved with community council and the transcript process. I'm going to try to go to presentation mode and see if it, did that, is that showing the right thing, Adam, on the screen? Perfect, okay. So this is for the transcript for the class of 2024 and beyond. We already have an approved transcript for the class of 2023. So why do we need a revised transcript? So over the past few years, we've been updating our assessment practices, and we've really been focusing on making sure that assessment is meaningful and that it's deeply tied to our instruction and to our standards. So in doing that alignment between our instruction and our assessment, we've also been looking at making sure that our assessment is really deep. And in doing so, we're often scoring many of our assessments using rubrics on a one-to-four scale. So that doesn't match with 100-point scale and As and Bs and so forth. So that, that's one piece we've been working on that is pushing us to look at revising our transcript. The other piece is that our grading practices were different from instructor to instructor, and we felt really strongly that students should have that common expectation and common experience around grading and reporting. So we've been working on our grading practices, and we have consistency in our grading practices, so the importance of revising the transcript to better reflect that consistency in our grading. The other piece is that the state requires us to be able to report out and to record student progress in meeting those district and graduation competencies. So if we're tracking student progress through competencies, we want to be able to make sure that both students can understand how we're tracking their progress, parents can understand, and that there's a relationship between their assessments, progress on their standards and competencies, and then that, that final piece, that final transcript. So what did our work look like? What work have we done so far to bring us here to this final transcript? So way before even March of 2019, we started doing some work on our grading and reporting, and after the grading and reporting work, we then transitioned to looking at a transcript and doing some research, even before we formed this design team. So we had read research, we had reached out to other districts, looked at transcripts from other districts, and then we formed a design team in March of 2019. That team started working on both reviewing current transcripts as well as designing what our transcript might look like. And that took us through the spring and into June, and you might remember, last June, we shared a draft transcript to the school board and, as well as Sohegan staff, and got feedback. And you might remember that some of the feedback you had shared was around the work-study practices, that we had them separate for every single course. So that was really important feedback we received from the board that we incorporated into drafts and revisions that we've made with the transcript. We then worked on revising our transcript based on that school board and staff feedback last summer. We then shared, which was a really important step, and one that the, the board felt was a critical piece, as well as our guidance department, and everyone on our design team wanted to get this transcript in front of colleges. So Karen and her team really worked to share So Karen and her team really worked to share our draft transcript with colleges for feedback. And later in the presentation, I'll share with you that list of colleges that provided feedback to us. We then took the feedback from the colleges, which was a little surprising, some of the feedback we've received, but really helpful in helping us to make sure that our transcript is something that we can, that communicates, you know, and puts our students in the best light and is understandable by colleges. So that was a critical step to make those revisions. Then we shared that transcript with all stakeholder groups and this was a really important step, which got a little disrupted during our transition to remote learning and pushed off. But I met with AMS students. Bethany Bernasconi helped me to organize that. We did a great Zoom call with her student leadership team. I also had a Zoom session with parents. We had over 50 parents attend and it was sent out to all fifth through eighth grade families across both Amherst and Mount Vernon and, you know, a deep involvement. And not only did we have 50 people on the Zoom, but I was also able to record that Zoom, post it to our website, and then have a feedback form where people could provide feedback on the transcript to help us make some revisions or changes. I also shared it with our assessment, grading and reporting committee for feedback. And then Kathy, Natalie and Karen also shared it with our coordinators to get feedback from them. Then we presented that. So after we got all of that feedback and made some revisions, a minor revision, some tweaks and changes, but some important pieces. We then presented that transcript to community council and to, first to the executive board. And I have to say that was probably the best experience we had with transcript. Such pointed questions, really helpful questions and things that we were able to clarify and even kind of make clearer. And we got great feedback from community council. We were then able to present that to full council over the course of two meetings and then we received approval for that from community council. And now our last step is coming to the school board. So these, this is the list of colleges that provided feedback on our draft transcript. So they're certainly a pretty wide group of colleges, both geographically as well as, you know, what, if they have certain areas of, you know, while we have, you know, tech schools as well as more liberal arts colleges, a pretty wide variety and range of colleges. And I'm going to pause there and see if Karen wants to jump in just to speak a little bit. She really helped to oversee and run this process of sharing with colleges and getting direct feedback from them. Karen, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, so, yeah, so this, the transcript, this was a deliberate attempt to, to provide the draft transcript that we heard early in the fall. Since then, we've made some edits to the transcript based on some of their feedback and also previous feedback from the board, I believe. We made some changes. So this was a deliberate attempt at reviewing the transcript with the admissions folks. And these are admissions folks who visit with us, who generally are the people who are reviewing students from our school in our area. So they, they're the ones who helped to make those decisions. So we were able to get some really, I think, good feedback on that, on the transcript.
And Karen, did you want to summarize it all? Some of the feedback, I know one was around the competency piece.
Yeah, so, you know, colleges really aren't in the business necessarily of dictating or passing judgment on schools' grading practices. I mean, they, you know, visit with schools and see applications from thousands of different schools. So their job is really to make sense of it and for us to provide a clear communication through our transcript on how, on what a student's achievement looked like during their tenure at South Heagan. So, you know, most of the feedback that we received from the schools was really based on kind of three areas. You know, what, what, what they needed in terms of information to help them make that decision and also formatting of a transcript, which they tend to focus on, to make sure that it's clear to them what they're seeing and how they're understanding it. And then also what, what might be interested, interesting to them, but they wouldn't necessarily include it in reviewing an applicant and using it as part of their decision making. So based on some of that information, we made edits to that initial draft that we showed them in the fall.
Great. Thank you, Karen. So this is our transcript that we're presenting to the board. And if, if you can't see us, I can open up a full size. I would just have to probably swap screens. Can we see it? Okay. Yeah, perfect. Thank you. So a few really important things that I wanted to point out, as Karen mentioned, we, our original transcript, which you might remember, we presented to the school board about a year ago. And we had two pages to that transcript. This first page was the list of our courses along with our course scores. And the back page was our, our competencies. So we really, instead of breaking it out by courses, we broke out scores by competency. And the feedback that we received from the colleges was, well, that's nice to see and know, but we really typically don't receive that from other schools or not very many other schools and wouldn't quite know how to have that part of our review process. So that was one piece that was removed from our transcript. So we really went back to having our courses on the front without our academic competencies on the back. So that was an important update and a change. And then the other piece we wanted to share before I dive in too deeply with this transcript is that this really is a mock-up of the transcript. As you know, we're switching student information systems. We'll be moved from MMS to Power School. So there may be some limitations in Power School in how we build our transcript. So we anticipate being able to build a transcript that's very similar to this. The content is the same. It just could be some slight formatting changes. So this isn't a final for what that format would look like, but it is our proposal for the content that's on there. So first of all, I wanted to touch on these graduation competencies here. So these are part of our portrait of a graduate. They are the New Hampshire work-study practices. And they are scored not, and there's sometimes confusion around these because they look like they might be items that you would be scoring, almost like you score participation for a student. For example, you may have experience that you may have been in class and received a participation grade. That's not what these work-study practices are. They're truly competencies, just like an academic competency that we explicitly teach students and that we explicitly assess. Would be a rubrics for all of these work-study practices and their score is part of an assessment. For example, a student might be doing a lab report as an assessment. And part of that lab report may have been a lab activity that they did with a partner. And the teacher might be laying out expectations for how to collaborate with your lab partner and scoring collaboration. And then they're also scoring on that same lab report, what a student actually produces individually. So with these work-study practices, I know there's a wonder around how they end up being scored and whether or not they should be on a transcript. They are part of our portrait of a graduate. They are the competencies we expect students to leave us having. And interestingly, and Georgia will probably share more later, it was our students that expressed a deep desire to have these on their transcript, which I, that was through feedback from community council, that this actually provides a deep window into South Heagan and what South Heagan is about and what South Heagan values. And that having them on the transcript would be a critical piece for that. On the other piece, some people wonder about this term creativity. So I just wanted to address that. Creativity is not about being artistically creative. It's really critical thinking. And it's creative and critical thinking. It's being able to think critically and think outside the box. So this creativity term has caused a little confusion among some people because they think it's related to art. So we have discussed with our assessment, grading and reporting committee, the wonder around maybe changing that term. It is critical thinking in our portrait of a graduate, so it might make sense for us to adjust that. So again, if our graduation competency of critical thinking, you know, it certainly could replace this term creativity on the transcript. So I just wanted to make that clear and something that the greeting, assessment, greeting and reporting committee is looking at. The next thing I wanted to talk about is the weighted GPA and unweighted GPA. So last year, community council passed a proposal to have a weighted GPA. This year, that was clarified that both the weighted GPA and unweighted GPA will be on the transcript. Now, the weighted GPA is only for AP or dual enrollment courses. And that was determined through the proposal that went to community council. Now, if a student is in an honors class, that certainly would show up here as honors. So that colleges would be aware that that was, that students chose to take that honors pathway or honors challenge. But honors does not weight a GPA. And that was decided based on that community council proposal that went forward. And the rationale for that was that both the AP as well as the dual enrollment courses are really college level courses where honors is more enrichment and going deeper, not accelerating to a different level. So that was the rationale behind that community council proposal, which is why the weighted GPA would include just those AP or dual enrollment courses and then the unweighted GPA is on there as well, based on community council. The other piece I wanted to talk about were these additional graduation requirements. So these were things, again, that we received feedback that are unique to South Heagan and that we felt that this transcript really should show that the uniqueness and what South Heagan is about. So having these, our Division One exhibition, our junior learning project, these graduation requirements on the transcript were an important part in communicating who we are and what our expectations are for students. And I just wanted to make sure the senior project EQ was kind of clarified. Since this is a mock-up, we didn't have much room for this. When we build the actual transcript, there would be more room in this space for the entire senior project essential question to be written in there. It wouldn't just be the topic. I know sometimes a student's topic might seem to some, maybe on the outside, almost frivolous. And we, I know there was a concern that students might not pursue a certain topic. But there are essential questions, always a pretty deep essential question, even if you look at the topic. I know one year I attended a senior project on the zombie apocalypse. But while that topic might seem silly, it was actually a fascinating presentation and it was all about preparedness and emergency preparedness. So that's what would show up on the transcript. And the senior project essential question is usually not finalized. And Karen, jump in if I'm wrong, but remembering back to panel time around December or so, maybe even into January. So when students are, if they're applying and that first round of transcripts is going out, it is going out without that senior project essential question on it. Because we wouldn't, seniors wouldn't have their EQ finalized at that point. So.
Or it could change. Sometimes that happens as well. A student might tweak their EQ.
Yes. So we would, you know, this is not about holding students back from doing a project that they'd be interested in but are worried about it appearing on their transcript. If they're applying for early action and early decision, that may not even be part of the consideration if it's not on the transcript. And those EQs are deep essential questions, which I think is important. The other piece, here is our GPA scale, which is critical in understanding how the course score translates to the letter grade. Really good feedback, feedback we received from our assessment, grading and reporting committee was around this chart. We actually had the letter grade equivalent at the end of the chart originally. And the feedback from the committee was no, put that letter grade right next to the course score so that colleges understand that if they're reweighting the GPA, that they should really be pulling this course score and really looking, or I'm sorry, pulling the letter grade equivalent and looking at the letter grade equivalent to wait, to reweight a GPA instead of looking at that course score. The course score is important because that is the score that a student would receive on a progress report or a report card for their actual course. But that letter grade equivalent is really important to translate to colleges what that course score means for us. And we felt strongly that both should be on the transcript because the course score is that connection to the progress report and what students understand, they're seeing and getting in their course. And then that letter grade is helping colleges to interpret what that means. And I think I went over all of the important parts here. I think you're pretty familiar with this as far as the credits and the type, you know, honors or AP dual enrollment courses. And this would show a current course enrollment students down here. So Karen, did I miss anything on the transcript?
I think, again, you know, initially when we first reviewed this with, with colleges, it looked a little different. It didn't have the column of the letter grade equivalent right next to the course score. So that's something that we decided, and I think also based on the board's feedback too, was something that was needed. The one thing that the colleges really did stress, which we did put on the front and center, was the GPA scale. And that was helpful to have it right front and center on the transcript. And I, and a couple of other things that, that they stressed was very important to them was having final scores and final grades and final scores on, in all subjects, which we have, and also to provide senior grades during that earlier part of the year because of the early action, early decision process.
Great. Thank you, Karen.
Yep.
So I, this is a little messy of a slide, so I apologize. But I thought it would be really important for you to kind of see our evolution of transcripts. So this is, and this has been our transcript, and Karen will be able to tell us forever, I think, as long as I can remember. So not just the class of 22, 2020 to 2022, but as far as currently enrolled students. So it's certainly older than that. So this lists, it doesn't, it's not broken up by year. You can see the year here on the left, but certainly visually not under your blinkers. This is what was in MMS and what was capable of us creating in MMS. And we used to show each trimester of scores and we felt pretty strongly that we should be showing just that, that end score for students. So the class of 2023 and approved the class of 2024 would have a transcript that only shows final course scores for students, where this shows your trimester scores as well as your final scores here. And again, you know, it shows credit and this was, you know, kind of the, a little guide here on this transcript. But visually, certainly not as easy to see here. And it, you know, it does list all the courses and final scores, but it also had the trimester score. So in moving, we really tried to create something that was more visually appealing and a little easier to interpret. And then this GPA scale is right front and center on the class of 2023. So again, something that we have received feedback on being a really helpful piece. And again, our additional graduation requirements were placed on this class of 2023 transcripts, similar to the class of 2024 and beyond. The only, or the main difference, there are two main differences. So this class of 2023 was, you know, our, was approved already. So we're looking to approve the class of 2024. So the, the main difference is a proposal went forward to community council just this year around, including the unweighted GPA in addition to the weighted GPA. So that's one difference you see on that. The other difference is that we have both course scores and the letter grade equivalent. We felt pretty strongly that students should understand where that letter grade came from. And if they're used to on their progress reports and report cards seeing course scores, we want to show both. We also want to communicate to colleges that we have a standards-based system, that we are scoring against criteria. And that course score helps colleges to understand that piece. But then we're also kind of translating for them and giving them that letter grade equivalent. And then the other piece is that the work-study practices are put on the class of 2024 and beyond. So that is another important difference between the transcripts. Karen, anything else to add?
I think the only thing, I mean, you mentioned it earlier, we're in the process, actually just this morning, had a meeting with Power School to start thinking about designing the transcript. So that's in the works. We, and what's exciting is we have, I think, a lot more options and we And what's exciting is we have, I think, a lot more options than we ever did with MMS, which you see that is, that was the option. So it sounds like we have more design-type options with Power School.
Great. Thank you. And then I do want to pull both Tim Catrow as well as Georgia Craven into our presentation. And just hear from each of them. They did such a great job articulating during community council. And Tim was deeply involved as well in communicating directly with colleges and sharing that transcript. So Tim, I'll jump to you first. Hopefully you can just share a little bit of your perspective on, you know, how that process went when you were sharing our draft transcripts, feedback you received. And then just any overall points, some of the points maybe you had shared during community council.
Sure. Thanks, Christine. So one, I guess one thing I want to kind of stay, starting out is like, this was a really big job for like, to, you know, to kind of take this from kind of the, you know, concepts that the grading and reporting committee and kind of bring this with kind of, while trying to serve so many different masters, like the monumentality of the task, I don't think can be understated. So I have a lot of respect and, you know, into the thought and the care and the process that, you know, that went into this. And I was, I think, a small part of that. But I know it was, you know, much bigger than myself and even what I saw. You know, I think that part of the challenge is like, you know, with South Heagan wanting to be kind of on the vanguard of competency-based education, sometimes we have this idea that colleges are there too and cheering us along. And in fact, that, and I think we learned, you know, through kind of the process of speaking with colleges is that's not necessarily the case. They, they're maybe slower to adapt in transition than high schools are. You know, so in the other thing too is I think that from the outside perspective, a lot of times there's this idea that it's, you know, a professor with kind of, you know, a blazer with leather patches on his elbows, smoking a pipe review, you know, carefully reviewing every applicant that comes in. When in the reality, you know, it's, I think, sometimes recent grads, sometimes with kind of limited training, kind of coming in and trying to make sense of, you know, the different pieces that high schools are giving to them. And, you know, so I think that we're pretty aware of that in student services, you know, of, you know, kind of what our colleagues look like in the admissions process. And I think all along, we've been very careful to advocate for making sure that this was going to plug in well to the college admissions process because they're going to be the audience that I think is scrutinizing transcripts, the, you know, the most closely. And, you know, and so I think that, you know, the message that we heard resoundingly in that process was, make sure that you have some kind of conversion table. And sometimes they would say it's, it doesn't have to be on the, most of the time they'd say it doesn't have to be on the transcript. It could be on the profile, it should be on the profile. And so I think that that's one of the things that I think our committee took and really kind of listened to and said, let's be as careful about how we do this as possible to make sure that we're setting up our students to be seen in the best possible light. And what the group came down, and I wasn't part of how that decision was made, but it sounds like what the group came down to was putting, like Karen mentioned, that letter grade directly next to the core score. And, you know, and making that as crystal clear as possible as it can be in the admissions process with no opportunity to miss that. So, you know, so I think that's just an example of, you know, the care that the group took to make sure that this is going to, I think, honor where we're going as far as grading and reporting, but make sure we're doing the best that we can do to make sure that we're serving our students as well in the college admissions process as we possibly can.
Can I just add something to that, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
I think also what we need to also consider, it's really important that the transcript is authentic and authentic to our school and reflecting what our grading practices are, but also what our values are. So I think it is sometimes difficult when you, when you're transitioning to a new system or transitioning to a new grading system because you kind of have one foot in each place. But it's very important to reflect the changes and really important for that transcript to be authentic.
Thanks, Karen. In Georgia, if you want to jump in, I know you spoke so well to the transcript during community council and you'll be our moderator next year and in a lot of leadership positions. And I thought it would be really helpful for the board to hear student feedback on the transcript.
Yeah, of course. So I'm going to be a senior next year. So unfortunately, this won't apply to me. But I really loved it when Christine brought it to community council. And just a few things that I really liked about it was the holistic approach to the transcript is really great. And it gives huge opportunity for kids who are applying to like various kinds of schools. For the bigger schools that really only like to look at the GPA, your grades, that's all they care about for the first round, then that's all right there. You can see the letter grade and the numbers, and then you have the GPA. But then for smaller, maybe liberal arts schools that like to see the holistic student, the whole student, then there's a lot of extra information like the JLP topic and essential question and the senior projects essential question, which I think is really, really important to have on there because we spend so much time working on both of those things. I just turned in my JLP two weeks ago and it took so much time, so much effort. And it's really nice for those things to be recognized. And a student, Callie McBride, she's on community council. She was talking to us a little bit about how, about the college process and how some schools really didn't know much about South Heagan and didn't know that it was very different from other schools. And that's obviously one of our key, our key things is that we're different. And so she was saying that to advocate for us and for our school when we're going through the college process. And I think that this transcript helps to do that because like junior research paper and the senior project are two things that are pretty unique to South Heagan. And having those right on the transcripts kind of draws the admissions officer's eyes, I think, to our transcript and to our school and then to the student. And I also think that it's just easier to have the letters there. I knew that we were talking about maybe not having the letter grade at one point. And I think that that was like the best choice we could have made because then it's not complicated transcript, it's just very in-depth. And so props to Christine for this and to Karen because I think it's wonderful. I think the student body is going to really enjoy it. And I wish that I could have this transcript. But having not have it, I would love for the rest of the students coming in to have it.
Thanks, Georgia. Georgia, you also spoke a little bit about the work-study practices when you spoke during community council and just about yourself a little bit as a student and what those meant to you and why you would want them on a transcript. I don't know if you're comfortable sharing that with the board?
Yeah, of course. I'm somebody who struggles a ton in like math and foreign language, those types. I'm really a humanities person. And so my grades might not be as high in those classes, but my effort is always there. And effort's normally not something that we have on the transcript. So the, what is it, self-directed learner, I think, is what it is for like the effort grade. So having that for like my math classes or my classes that just maybe I can't get the scores, but I always put in the effort, I think that's really important because then the college admissions officer can put two and two together and see that maybe she can't test well, but she works super hard and tries to do the best she can. So I think that's something also important that is not always advocated for. But this, I think, does a really good job with that.
Thank you, Georgia. And I know you're done with school, so we really appreciate you being willing to come and just share that student perspective. Georgia was also in my advisory this year. So it was a little bit easier for me to tap into Georgia and ask a favor for her to join us. So, you know, Karen, I don't know if there was anything else you wanted to jump in with, or Natalie or Kathy, anything else you wanted to share? But I'm happy to go to questions, Pim, if you wanted to entertain questions at this point. And, oh Karen, did you want to share a little bit about the school profile and that process and what the school profile might look like? Sorry, my dog's squeaky toy. I apologize.
Okay, I was muted too. Yeah, so the school profile, I think everyone knows what a school profile is. Each year, we update the school profile to reflect any changes in the experiences of the student. So a good example will be in this next year, our school profile will include a little bit of information about what our remote learning experience and put that in perspective for colleges and what our students were asked to do. And so it'll reflect what their experience has been. And that's going to be true for this class of 2024. Several years down the road, the transcript will also reflect their experiences. So we'll update the transcript with information to describe that class with the data and our community. And also will also include information about the grading practices as we usually do. And we'll have to update that accordingly.
Thanks, Karen. And I know Bill spoke a few meetings ago about how the transcript needs to be able to stand on its own, that the school profile is a really important piece. And as Tim mentioned, that was a point of consideration for us. Do we put the GPA and course score to letter grade conversion on our school profile? Or does it go on the transcript? And our ultimate decision was to put it on the transcript because we felt so strongly that the transcript should stand alone. That yes, that school profile provides such deep context and can be really helpful. But we didn't want to create a transcript, as Bill eloquently said a few meetings ago, that needs a key to interpret it. So it shouldn't be the school profile there helping you to interpret the transcript. It should be a standalone document, and we felt pretty strongly about that. And Karen and I worked on what might the school profile look like. But what's really challenging is that school profile needs to be done in the summer before the senior year because we need to look at, it's a comprehensive document that's not just cut and paste a few words and make a few changes. It is a complete picture of that class and those students and of our school. So we've really struggled with trying to create a mock-up of a school profile that would match this transcript because we're just not sure of, these kids haven't even entered the high school yet. So it's a challenge for us to be able to present that at the same time as the transcript because it wouldn't accurately reflect. There would be so many holes and gaps and lines and, you know, pieces that we couldn't. If that makes sense. And I don't know, Karen, if you have anything else to share on that?
Yeah, it would be very hard to predict what, you know, what the experience may have been for students three, four years ahead. So that information, we don't really have yet.
And one thing we did was with the school profile, our current seniors, and Karen, you can speak to this even better than I can. Now that we have rolling grades, so the student's grade continues throughout the year. We don't have separate semesters. That was a critical, important piece to update the school profile with. So if that's for our current seniors. So that was updated in the school profile this year. But it's not just copied and pasted, you know, something shoved in. It's what, what do we want to convey to colleges about this class, this group and our school and our grading practices? So it's really taken as a holistic picture that is really intertwined. So thank you, Karen. Pim, I'm happy to answer questions if there are questions, if you'd like to entertain them.
Yeah. First of all, thanks both to Christine and Karen for an excellent overview of the transcript. I thought it was great and very insightful. And thank you also to Tim and Georgia for your insight, your various levels of students and counselor. So I appreciate that as well. I'll start off, actually, with a couple of questions and then I'll turn it over to other board members. So one of the things that you guys mentioned in the transcript, and I think it was from Karen, you have the senior EQ section. So that would not be filled in in early fall, right? When people are, when the kids are applying to colleges. So does that field just blank or does it go away? Does it not shown at all? Because I guess my concern is if it's there and it's blank, it would almost bring up more questions than if it was not there at all.
Yeah, I mean, that's a question that we have. We'll have to look at, as we're building this transcript with Power School and what abilities we have to edit as we go along. I mean, some of that may need to be decided in the next couple of weeks to see what capabilities we have to do that. And to be honest, I mean, again, this was a draft of kind of an ideal of what we wanted. So we have to also consult with them to see if it's even possible to do an individual EQ for each transcript and what that would entail.
Okay.
Yeah, but, and also, students apply to college all the way through the spring. And mid-year, the end of first semester, we send an updated transcript to every school that a student applied to. So even if they applied early, we still will send an updated transcript mid-year and it would include that information.
Great.
Pim, I think that's important that it doesn't just sit blank, you know?
Yeah.
Confusion. So a really good point that it might need to say like, updated, will be updated December or something like that.
Or I know there's programs, I don't know if this particular software has it, but programs where if the field is blank, it leaves it completely off. But as soon as you put something in it, then it shows up. So that's something to perhaps look at. Also, another thing, I think Christine, that you mentioned, and I just was curious, and perhaps you can provide us some additional comments on that, is when you said initially, when we were talking to the different colleges, you got some very interesting feedback. Meaning, I would assume that means both, hey, I really like it, and other comments like, I'm not so sure I like this at all. And probably most in between. So maybe you can kind of give us a little, a quick synopsis of, you know, what some of the good points and some of the not so good points were.
And I didn't speak directly to the colleges, Karen and her team did. But what she shared with me, and I guess from my perspective, what I thought was so interesting was that colleges didn't know what to, and Karen, might correct my language because I'm saying this more simply, but that colleges didn't quite know what to do with our competencies. So if it said reading literature, writing, reading informational text, they said, oh, this is great information, but we don't get this from a lot of other schools. So we wouldn't know what to do with it or what context to put it in. So I thought that was surprising, right?
Yeah. Yeah, of course. We thought they'd love it, right, Christine? We thought, wow, this is awesome. They'll really like this. And I think that some colleges did express that while this is good and valuable information during that, their application season, that they really wouldn't use that information as a decision-making for them. So while it was maybe anecdotal information, it wouldn't be included in any decision-making process that they had. So then we reflected on that and said, okay, the amount of work that it will take to do that. And if it's not something that's necessarily valuable or helpful to them, then let's not have that second page.
We didn't want to cause confusion either, having that second page. If colleges told us they wouldn't quite know what to do with it, we thought adding that second page could be confusing. So that's why we made that decision to take it off. The other, what I thought really interesting piece of feedback was that GPA conversion chart and the feedback that, hey, you could put it on the school profile, but you could also. and the feedback that, hey, you could put it on the school profile, but you could also put it right on the transcript. And how important that piece was, and one that we didn't necessarily think about making sure was front and center on that transcript, but one that was a pretty important and really helpful piece of information for us. Karen, I don't know if there were other takeaways from the colleges that you found.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think nothing really kind of surprising for us. You know, I do want you to know that although this was, like I said, a real direct effort to gather feedback from colleges about the specific transcript, you know, these are conversations that we have with colleges each year. So, you know, we pride ourselves, I think our department is, you know, when we have 100 colleges that visit with us is, you know, that's also information that's passed between us, and we learn things about them, they learn things about us. So, this is also working knowledge that we've had about schools and then how they review things. I think one of the things that was happily surprising maybe is that they did appreciate the, we call it graduation competencies or work-study practices, because those things we know have been increasingly important for colleges to gather information about. In fact, they encourage us during, in the recommendations, I think you might know, if you've had students who've applied to college, that they ask teachers and counselors to reflect on those types of work-study practices in their recommendations and on the school report, which is additional form that we have to fill out on each student. So, and those are, those are things that they're looking for to help them make those decisions.
Hey, no, that's awesome, thank you.
Can I just, can I just?
Can I add Tim to that?
Well, yeah, I was just gonna, to Pim, to something you said very, I was gonna respond pretty directly to my experience talking with college folks with regard to that idea of like, so I would say, people range from very diplomatic to very frank and very experienced. You know, we had 20-plus year, you know, veterans to people who were newly minted in the role. And I don't, I did not speak with a single person who seemed alarmed by the transcript or felt like, no, tear this thing down and start over. I'd say like, you know, the real frank, you know, folks would say things like, if there's not, you know, if there's not a clear way to, you know, to distinguish between strong students, we're going to be forced to guess, like things like that. You know, that was what some of the, I'd say, most interesting and frank comments I heard were, but, but nothing negative, kind of direct to what we were showing them. Most were very familiar with competency-based transcripts because of our, you know, schools in Maine and Vermont that are already kind of doing this. And so, it was, and most of the college admissions reps are New England representatives. So, they're, they're working with all the schools up here. So, for most, it wasn't the first time seeing something like this.
Hey, well, thank you for that additional insight, I appreciate that. All right, I see two hands raised, first Amy and then Laura, and then Stephanie, go ahead, Amy.
Thank you. So, yeah, thank you to Christine and everyone who has worked so diligently on this. I had a number of questions that throughout the process, and my questions have been answered. And with that, I would actually like to make a motion to accept the transcript.
Okay, we can, we can make the motion and second it, but then we can have our discussion before it gets voted on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, is there a second from anyone?
I'll second.
Steve Coughlin, okay, motion by Amy to accept the transcript as presented, seconded by Steve Coughlin. Now, time for discussion. Did you want to add anything else, Amy, or are you all set for the moment?
I'm good for the moment.
Okay, I'll go to Laura, who had her hand up, but her hand is down now, so.
I'm still here.
Okay, you took your hand down, so I wasn't sure if you still had your question. Do you have a question?
Yes, I was asking Christine earlier, and I was hoping she could, I didn't see it directly addressed. But I did want to say thank you. I'm very comfortable with these transcripts. I think they show a lot of work and effort, and I really appreciate that of Karen and of Christine. My question is, how are you going to concisely summarize the difference between the course score and the letter grade? You know, and every time I look at this, it seems kind of complicated. I mean, and when I look at the transcript, how in the profile are you going to have one or two sentences to try to describe it?
That's all. I'll probably have Karen jump in as well on this, but, you know, I think the important piece is to let colleges know that we are, that we score against standards and that we are competency-based. So, those course scores are, they're a competency-based course score, but that we have that letter grade translation there.
Yeah, I mean, just what you said Christine, I expected to be more than one or two sentences to describe that, maybe a paragraph. But, you know, we've reviewed transcripts and profiles from many different high schools. And you would be surprised at how brief the profiles can be. And ours actually is probably one of the longest ones that I've seen. So, I expect that we will be able to concisely explain, but thoroughly explain.
Thank you for that. Stephanie, and then after that, Dave, you had your hand up, it's not up, but if you wish to speak after Stephanie, you may, go ahead Steph.
Thanks. First of all, Christine, Karen, Tim, everyone who's worked on this, really thank you. It's Christine, I think you and I talked a few weeks ago, and this is so much clearer than the old transcript that our current students have. So, it's clean, it's concise. I'm going to go back to that creativity. I want critical thinker, something else in there. I do not want to see creativity on there because it has a definite definition. And I, I don't even want to say I'm going to vote for this tonight unless I see that changed. I'm not comfortable with creativity on there, so that's one of my things. How are grades going to be shown when we send them out for seniors applying to college? So, that, like that MS1 or, you know, that semester one, we can be able to show that maybe a maximum score in the class you can achieve is only a two or only a three, because if a kid's score is sent out as a, you know, if this is going to be automatically fed from the grading system, whatever we happen to be using at the time, whether it's in power or something else, right now, teachers can override that system. But this transcript, I'm assuming, is going to start feeding directly from the system. What are we going to do to say, you know, this, in statistics, the kid only has a 2.5, but the maximum they can get in the class is a 2.5? I think that's going to be important to show.
So, that probably wouldn't show on the transcript, we'd have to do one or two different things. One, if we move to a different software, we might move away from that maximum achievable score piece and really look at making sure that there are multiple opportunities for fours. Or that if we kept in power for some reason and still had that maximum achievable score, we would make sure that we had really clean and clear assessment maps, which we're going to start working on this summer, that shows where the break, where the mid-semester break is and the semester break, that there are opportunities for fours in all of those standards and/or competencies for students, so that your maximum achievable score is a four, so that we don't, because that would be very confusing on a transcript, we want it to be clean and simple. So, I think the important piece is that we go back to our grading and reporting system, and we look at, you know, if there are pieces that are confusing or pieces that are like sticking points, holding us back, how can we revise that, that pain point or that tension? And what can we do to make sure that that's alleviated instead of changing our transcript? Because I think it's important that students have opportunities for fours, that if our course score is added before, that the student could be achieving a score, and to keep it cleaner on the transcript, and to make those tweaks or changes either through our assessment mapping process or through a change in software.
And then the last question I have is, when we're looking at the work-study practices, and I know I look through the rubrics for the work-study practices, and this might be a question that we have to address. When you have kids with 504s or IEPs, and they have, you know, anxiety, for instance, when you go to do the work-study practices, it can end up being a huge explanation that a kid has to make, depending how they get scored on the work-study practices. And that's more of a grading, reporting, assessing committee question. But I think we need to be a little careful that we're not, I want to, just, you know, say, tearing down a student in some ways, because that's how they might see it, depending how it comes across, and then what the colleges see right on the transcript. You know, it could be a little, little difficult to explain. So, I think that's something the grading, reporting, assessment committee has to consider. But yeah, for me, honestly, I do like this, it's the creativity. I want to know that's coming off before I say yes tonight.
And I'm pretty confident, you know, that was, and Amy, I don't know if you want to weigh in at all, that, you know, that went to the assessment, grading, and reporting committee, it was something that they were looking at as a committee. I feel pretty confident that across the board, people are interested in making that change. You know, if the board wanted to make a motion that had that as the, that one change, you know, in the transcript, I'm comfortable with that, but I'm also pretty confident that the committee itself would be making that change anyway, which in turn would change this. So, you know, I know Amy's on that assessment, grading, and reporting committee along with Laura as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. Yeah, so we'll do that, we'll add that in at the end of our discussion. So, Dave was up next, and then I see Laura's hand up, but before Laura repeats, I would ask Steve and George if they have any comments, you don't have to answer me right now, but after Dave speaks, so go ahead, Dave.
This is immensely better than the last time I looked at it, Christine. And I probably, and I commend you guys for doing all the work you did, and especially the research into the various schools and how they view things, because that's really what the, in my mind, that's the major thing that this represents, is a picture of what the student is, and the best, putting the student, putting the student in the best available light. Just a question about the weighted and unweighted grade point averages. And it's really not a question about the averages per se, but it's really about the, if a, if a school, college that is, came in and asked for the standard deviation and the mean for either of those two, would you give it to them?
Of the work-study practices or for the course scores?
No, the weighted, I'm sorry, there's a weighted grade point average at the top.
Oh, yes.
And there's an unweighted, sorry about that, I may have mislabeled those. And, you know, in and of themselves, I don't really, it's hard to tell, you know, what the numbers really mean. Statistically, you would add, you know, more, you know, better statisticians than I would probably ask for mean and better deviation. Is that often asked for, that's the question, and then if you did, if it was, would you give them that information? And if, if you would, then why wouldn't you put it on the transcript?
It's definitely a Karen question.
So, if you look at our profile, we have statistical data about the class in terms of where their, there's a, there's a bar chart where there, where the GPAs fall. So, a college can see if it's, okay, a student has a 4.0, it's, they are in that top percent of the class. So, it shows it's spoken out by, by that data from that class. And I believe also that the mean is also reported there on the profile, under the, under that bar chart.
Was it always on the profile, Karen? I don't remember.
It's been there for years.
Okay.
I remember when the first time, what happened was previous to, I think it was like 2012, when we eliminated decile ranking, we started to include that bar chart to help colleges determine where kids kind of were falling. So, it's happened since at least that year.
Yeah, it definitely happened, right, I believe, right at that, the point when the decile was eliminated.
Right.
That's very interesting. Historically, I don't recognize that that way, but I was actually told by, by a, by a former administrative person that you couldn't get that information. Well, I don't know, I was, I was surprised.
Okay, Steve, anything? George, anything in this moment? No? Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Chairman, yep, just real quick, first off, nice job on this, it's, you know, pretty clear and concise. If I can follow it, I'm sure most people can. I guess, my question is, was this the version that it is now, did you model this after another institution? Like, what was your, like, I started out with one product, and now you came out with this. Were you using this that's similar, or can you talk, speak a little bit about that? I don't know if you were talking about that, but.
Yeah, so, the first model we started with, which is what we showed to the school board two years ago, is a model from the Great Schools Partnership, and I'm happy to share that out with board members after, if they're interested in seeing what the original looked like. We had many iterations, I think Kathy White had an entire wall in her office carpet, every iteration of the change to our transcript. So, we need multiple, multiple changes, but I feel like we've, you know, it wasn't like a death by committee type of transcript where we felt like we were getting farther away from where we wanted, or too many things that didn't match or work well together. So, we wanted to really make sure that no matter what, what changes we made, we're still keeping the intent of what we were trying to communicate. And that first model did have two pages with competencies on the back, so, you know, the competencies were eliminated. But really, the front page of this is similar to that front page of the Great Schools Partnership transcript. They did not have that GPA scale, which was something colleges recommended they had, and I'm pretty sure they didn't have the letter grade equivalent. But again, we, this is, we felt strongly that this is not a report card or a progress report, this is a transcript to communicate with someone outside of the school. And in doing so, we need to make sure that they understand what these course scores mean, so that it's not left up to interpretation. But I'm happy to share that out with the board.
So, thank you for that answer. So, I guess, this product is kind of a blended version of what you started out with. And I guess, from a college perspective, as long as it, I guess, shows something that they're more familiar with, I guess, the more buy-in, but I guess, is there anyone that you're aware of that is using something that we're using now? Like, kind of the final version, or we kind of are one-off?
So, this, if it is approved tonight, would be similar to what some other high schools are using. It's not that far off, and really, you know, besides the work-study practices or graduation competencies, and then the course scores, it's really not that different from what our transcript used to be. I think it's a step up in the sense that it has just the final score on it. And, you know, but there are other, as Tim mentioned, there are other competency-based schools in New Hampshire. So, those New Hampshire reps for colleges that actually, they're the admission officers, they read just New England. So, they're pretty familiar with a competency-based transcript. So, we could have gone really far off on making a, you know, we wanted something that we weren't standing out alone with, but also represented, you know, us and who we were. So, I think we took a very middle ground with this, we certainly could have made it, we could have, you know, not had letter grades on here, we could have had those, you know, the competencies on here. So, I feel like this was really, a really nice middle ground that everyone was feeling comfortable with.
Good, thank you. Good. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. And Laura, do you still have a question? Oh, and then Dave, looks like he's got another question.
Okay. I just wanted to mention that somewhere in the process, Karen mentioned that some courses won't even have a score. They'll only have a letter grade. V-Lax, some other transfers, I, I remember somewhere in the process. So having this transcript really solves that problem as well. And I'm very comfortable with this transcript. And I think it looks, it looks great.
Okay, great. And David and Stephanie, we, let's, I want to, you know, we've been talking about this a lot. I, I can't imagine that there's that many more questions, but we'll just do.
Mine's real quick.
A couple of people, okay. And then, then we'll go to a vote as we'll amend it as we were talking about and then we can go to the vote. Okay, so go ahead first, Dave.
So Christine, originally when you, we talked about the competency-based education grade, the, I don't know, the first column. One of the reasons you didn't want to include a letter grade was because the translation would have been very difficult. In other words, you know, it, it was a different grading system that would reduce the letter grade, the A B C grade versus the one, two, three grade, one, two, three, four grade. And now, is there, but now we have both and I'm, I'm so very glad that there is both. But is it a direct translation or is it a computed translation between the two? And the reason I'm asking, the reason I'm asking is because of the issue relative to, you know, a competency-based grade where the highest grade you can get is maybe a three and how that translates to a, you know, a grade for the, the letter grade.
Yeah, so it is a direct translation from the course score that's here. So if your course score like a three point five two, you look over here and a three point five two falls in at the, you know, for an A. So that's why we're showing that letter grade equivalent as an A. I think what you might be talking about is then how does that go into a GPA? Because a GPA is then on a different scale. It's on a four point three scale. So then you can see that really that course score for that same course that we were looking at, yet three point five two, it goes in if it's just a, a regular course, not AP or dual enrollment, it goes into the GPA as a four point three.
Well, that's not quite my question. My, my, my question is related to you know, a score where the maximum grade allowed in that score is a, as a three. And if you translate that to an A plus, it would be a higher grade in a grade point, in the grade point average system. So how does that, that translation get made if the highest grade you can get is different than an A plus?
So what we're working on is changing our grading system to make sure that the highest grade you can get isn't a three, that that highest grade is a four that you can get for our course.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Okay, last question from Stephanie.
ELOs. How are ELOs going to be shown on this? Is it going to show under like a learning experience or the current course enrollment? Or how does that show?
Um, under it, yeah. And we should have put one on as an example.
Yeah, that's my mistake. I know. I didn't, you know, again, this was just kind of a mock-up and I didn't include that.
It would be under type, Karen, right?
Yeah.
It would just have like a description under their current course enrollment or something so they know.
Yeah, under the type. So it'll say, I'm pointing to it, I'm pointing to it like you can see, like you can see it, like where it says V-Lax and internship and.
Yeah, that would say ELO. But would it, but would the ELO have a description or would it have under what class it kind of falls under?
Yeah, it would, it would have most probably what class it is because that students are, it, it's a course basically, but it's an extended learning opportunity, right? So it would be a course.
So they could have a marine biology extended learning opportunity. So we would just still put marine biology, but you could also see marine biology as a course on there as well. And it would be listed the same way and it would just listed as the course.
Okay. And that would be confusing to colleges that they'd understand.
Yeah. And, and again, in the, in the profile will have additional information about ELO, you know, what V-Lax is and ELO and yeah.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, great. So now I'm going to circle back to Amy and ask Amy if she would like to amend her original motion and to pull out the word creativity. Amy?
So can you explain that amendment a little bit more?
So under, and Christine.
I can jump in too.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, we'll have to go ahead and.
So I, I think your, your motion would be to approve the transcript for the class of 2024 with the term creativity, you know, with the, with the, a change of the term creativity to critical thinking.
Okay. All right. So I will make an amendment to my motion to change the term creativity to critical thinking in the work study practice section of the 2024 transcript.
Great. And Steve. Steve, you still want a second?
I will happily second that.
Okay, great. Let's do a roll call. So David.
Yes, Chen, yes.
Steve.
Yes.
Amy.
A C S.
Stephanie.
Grundy S.
Laura.
Taylor, yes. Thank you.
George.
Torres, yes.
And Gronster, yes. So motion passes seven, nothing. And we have a new transcript for the class of 2024. That's awesome. Very excited for, to, to bring that out.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for your great presentation and all your hard work. Okay, geez, I almost got lost where we were. And it was less than four hours. So that's awesome too. Next on the agenda, the unassigned fund balance update from Michelle. So.
I'll kick that off. That's all right, Mr. Chairman. So these next three items are really one discussion about the unassigned fund balance, year-end projects and the use of the capital reserve fund. So Michelle has the numbers about our, our projected unassigned fund balance to the end of the year. And the, we cannot afford with our, just our unassigned fund balance to do the science lab classrooms that I've been advocating for, for a long time. And so for, for a couple of reasons, we're going to suggest to you that we focus on the building management system of the HVAC controls and upgrading those with our year-end funds. A couple of reasons behind that primarily being we can afford it. But the second reason is we, we really need to be mindful that school may look very different over these next months and years. And that our use of the school building during the summer might change and the ability to regulate our temperature very well and consistently might prove to be very important to us. And while I still feel very strongly that our science labs are the largest curriculum need that we have, fixing the control systems for the high school will impact everybody in a very positive way. You'll remember that one February vacation, the system ran amok and we actually, the annex got so warm that it, it caused all of the animals that live there to perish, including the fish that have been there for, for decades. We have people that talk about in the summertime wearing their winter parkas and in the wintertime wearing shorts and a T-shirt to maintain their appropriate body temperature because of how vastly unpredictable our HVAC system remains. And we all know that we've been in school board meetings in that room where we've had to open the windows in the wintertime in order to maintain an appropriate temperature, which we all know is just literally throwing money out the window. I should say figuratively throwing money out the window. So for that, that's really our recommendation. The board might want to have a discussion about you, the use of capital reserve funds for the science lab classrooms. And that's a decision for the board to make, but our recommendation will be for that building management system. Michelle, anything that I missed or that you'd like to add or amplify?
The only thing that I'd, I'd like to just remind folks is that the unreserved fund balance is, it's a fluid number. So it's not done until the year is done and things can change. So it's an estimate. And even though a hundred thousand dollars is a large number, it is less, it is about one half of a percent of the total budget. So just keep that in mind as we're thinking about that. We're still in the same ballpark that we were when I last presented the numbers. But they are fluid.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Do we have, is, so is the current balance still at two hundred and ninety-one thousand?
Yes, it in that range.
In that range. All right. So let's have some additional discussions. Anybody have any questions? I see Laura's hand is raised and then George. So, oh, and Dave. Okay. I don't know the order. I'll just go in that order. Oh, I'm sorry, Michelle.
Can I jump in with a clarification? Cause I just want to make sure when we talk about the unreserved fund balance, it has various components. And a piece of that is revenue. So the, the two hundred and ninety thousand is the savings on the expenditure side. There is a revenue section that cannot be used for.
Yeah. Yeah, I think we all understand that. We've talked about that several times and hopefully everybody understands at this point. So, all right. So I'll go in that order. Laura, then George, then David.
My question is for Adam. He mentioned something at the joint facilities meeting about the science classrooms only being used for three years in the annex. Can you elaborate on, on that comment that you made?
Yes, there was a question about is, is an investment in the annexed science labs, does that run the risk that if we do a major renovation at Sohegan? Or if we repurpose the annex for a different purpose, will we have wasted money on those science lab upgrades? My answer was no. And one of the reasons why I said no was that if Amherst passed a new facility that then resulted in the annex being changed and used for a different purpose, that's at least three years out into the future before that construction project in Amherst would even be done. And so I was trying, I was really presenting the worst case scenario in that sense that if the annex were to change purposes, the minimum amount of time it would be before it would happen is three years. I don't think that's going to be the case anyway, because anything that we've talked about for the annex would, would probably only involve the first floor of the annex. I can't promise that because that's years out and includes a lot of variables. But I was trying to illustrate the point that the investment in the science labs would be worthwhile regardless of whatever facilities projects we're considering.
Okay.
All right, George?
Thank you. Last year was, I was new to the board and I remember we did have funds similar to the situation we find ourselves now that I guess evidently this board took up. And if I remember correctly, we were adamant about not touching it and it going back to the taxpayer. So what's changing now, I guess is my question.
So I, I, can I say one thing and then Adam, feel free to clarify if I mess something up. But I remember last year, so there was a, a huge difference. A lot of it was actually revenue that we, as Michelle mentioned, that we can't touch. However, we didn't, we weren't up to date on what the, that unreserved fund balance was. And we hadn't talked about any projects prior to that. So when we finally did start to talk about it in the fall, it was really after the time that was, would have been typically used to make those decisions. In other words, prior to the end of the previous fiscal year. So we already kind of in that murky water. And so we felt that in aggregate, that we should just give the money back since we didn't essentially have our ducks in a row. So Adam, feel free to add or, or not.
No, that, that's fair. And a point of criticism that's, that should be aimed at me is last year when I was serving both roles as superintendent and business administrator, I did not keep the board as up to date on the projection for unassigned fund balance. And so we were late to the game and evaluating projects and, and all of it went back. We did, most of it came from special education savings, but still we made a commitment last year, George, that we would be much more on top of reporting on the unassigned fund balances. We got closer to the end of the year. And a couple of board members have felt strongly that we should make investment with those funds at the end of the year. I just want to stress that that really is a decision that only the board can make about your comfort level with expending funds that would otherwise go back to offset the tax rate.
I appreciate that answer. And as you're talking through it, it's all coming back to me. I was one of those board members that was advocating for usage of some of those funds. I was just a little, I guess, you know, with age comes a few less brain cells, but sometimes thank you for that. So it was more of a transparency issue is what I'm hearing right now and giving the board an opportunity to actually look through the projects and discuss them. So I certainly appreciate that. So thank you.
Okay, David and then Amy and then Steve.
George, relative to your losing brain cells, I'm a lot older than you are. So I probably lost a lot more over the years. Anyway, I kind of recollected a little differently, but that's fine. I'm not going to make a point of that. But this is something that we've had to do. This is not something that's a once in a lifetime event. This, talking about unspent fund balance comes up every year. And it should be a planned event every year to discuss it. So that's, that's what I get concerned about when we don't even choose to, you know, do it in a prepared fashion. And I, I realized, Adam, that you were, you know, Michelle hadn't been there and that you were working on a dual role and that kind of thing. So I understand that. What I really wanted to ask about was the, the primary reason that the teachers were on the, our meeting last week, last, last week, I guess it was, and wanted to make improvements to the classrooms in the annex, to the science classrooms in the annex was, as I recall, the major feature was safety, was an issue of safety. And so, and the reason was crowding. You know, the problem was book bags under the desks and chairs and book bags pushed against somebody else's leg or whatever, and it created a safety problem. And I, I've just been thinking about that a bit and I wanted to understand why we, I mean, I know there are complications to the schedule and whatnot with this. But if we could limit the number of students in that classroom, I don't know what the numbers are now. I haven't looked at the master schedule. I'd hope that somebody would probably do that into interim from last meeting to this meeting. And to basically limit it from whatever the maximum now is, is twenty-two, I think it's twenty-two, to a number that's below that, maybe fifteen or fourteen and relieve the class load. Now, I know kids are going to move, have to move to another section, another classroom or that kind of thing. But maybe there's an opportunity here to use some of the other classrooms and, and maybe, I can't believe those annexed classrooms are used every period of the day. And it could be appropriate to try to relieve this classroom size as a temporary measure. And there are other things I know we have to consider in terms of budget and I'm willing to sort of relax that as well if we need to. But there's a possibility that we may be able to solve the crowding problem in a different way and not have students affected by it. Is that a possibility?
Well, lowering class size within the limits would likely require an additional teacher. And we were in the process of not only building a master schedule, but also transitioning our scheduling software to something different. So I don't have that. I can't tell you that tonight. But we all know intuitively smaller class sizes means more sections, which means more teachers. And so that, that's, that's one thing. The other thing I didn't mention, which if I'm being helpful to Michelle and her ability to, to sleep well at night, is we have another issue with our use of the unassigned fund balance to, to construct those classrooms. And that is, if you look on my screen, this was the budget we posted last year to the voters and on the MS twenty-six. And you can see in the, the third column appropriations for the ensuing year appropriations for the period ending six thirty, twenty twenty-one under building acquisition and construction or building improvement services or even other facilities acquisition and construction, none of those have an appropriation in them, which creates a difficulty for Michelle because you remember, this is our budget. We think about the fifty-page report or even a PowerPoint presentation as being our budget. But legally, this MS twenty-six that we all sign is our actual budget. And we have the ability, the school board has the ability to transfer funds between line items, but not between, not to any line items where there is not a budget. And so we would be pushing the boundaries a little bit to use the unassigned fund balance for the science classrooms. And Michelle would, I think, have said that, but it's important that I say it as well, that we need to consider that. And that's yet another reason why, in, in my opinion, we ought to try to budget for the science lab upgrade. Or if nothing else, budget a dollar in each of those budget lines so that the end of next fiscal year with any unassigned fund balance, we could do that science lab upgrade. So that's, I failed to mention that. Michelle probably would have if I'd let her speak more, but that's something else to consider, Dave.
That doesn't get at my question though, Adam. I'm just questioning whether or not we could you know, decrease the class sizes in those rooms and increase the number of classes somewhere else. If it requires hiring a different teacher, reassigning a teacher, you know, we agree with that. I mean, that's your domain anyway. You would, you would be able to do that. But rather than not do anything this year for those classrooms, this is one way of addressing the problem with, with resources and stuff that's within your power to use, Adam.
Yeah, without a doubt. Bill, this spring, Karen Chen and us and our team, when they do master scheduling, they, they do try and do everything they can to have in those science lab classes as small as possible. And we'll continue to do that. And Karen or Bill, if you're still on, I'm not sure if you guys still are.
I'm still here. And absolutely, that's, Dave, one of the things that we do try to do is keep, in particular, those labs and numbers down where we can. One thing you have to remember is of course, some of these courses that we're talking about are required courses for graduation that kids are signing up for in need. And so those are courses that we can't just eliminate from their schedules. We have to find, we have to find a way to get them scheduled. But we do spend, Rhonda in particular is a magician at trying to keep those numbers down and manipulate individual schedules. So we keep those classes as small as we can.
You know, I'm not advocating not having those kids go to those classes. I'm saying make the classes available in other rooms or, or in those rooms at a different period or something like that. So, you know, when the core facilities of the bill, I'll just remind you, when the core facilities of the building were built, there were about eleven hundred students planned for at that point in time. And they had seven periods a day. They had eleven hundred students and seven periods a day. And everybody took the required courses in science. Now we have, you know, seven hundred and fifty students and eight periods a day. And it just seems hard for me to imagine that there would be so much conflict in the schedule that those classrooms couldn't be, those classes couldn't be lightened.
I hear your point. And Steve Freites has done a good job of showing us some of the usage data as well. So we'll continue to look at it. And I know Bill and Karen's work around the master schedule and our new Power School system also gives us more insight that we might be able to leverage to figure that out. But I, I can't give you any more information tonight on that, Dave.
Okay.
All right. Thank you for that. And Dave actually made a good point to, to George. Last year was the anomaly of not spending or not even talking about projects were unassigned from that we may have had. We typically do do that on a yearly basis. So thank you for clarifying, Dave. All right. So I have Amy, then Steve, and then Stephanie. So go ahead, Amy.
Thanks, Tim. Yeah, I'll be brief. Yeah, I am pleased that we're talking about this. We spoke about this last month and this month, I think it's really important that we provide the community the opportunity to weigh in since we are talking about potentially utilizing funds that were not necessarily planned for in the budget. So I would say that the Joint Facilities Committee is also doing a deep dive into Sohegan two point O and other facilities issues. And that I know science, the renovations to the science labs would certainly be on the radar and potentially coming to the board as a recommendation, either through the budget or through some other funding mechanism. So I would agree that the HVAC renovations make a lot of sense. They affect all students. They affect the ability for students to learn at an optimum level and teachers to teach at an optimal level. So I think that it makes sense in terms of the dollars available. And I would like to see that move forward this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Amy. Steve.
Thanks. Unlike Amy, I will not be brief. I have three, three somewhat disjoint thoughts. And if you want, Tim, we can break them up and cycle other people in between my three thoughts. The first is a simple question. I'm looking at the, at the spreadsheet that has the list of projects and it's not clear to me which of those specifically Adam is proposing we do tonight. So could you clarify?
You want answered now?
Yeah, that's, that's the short, easy one. What are we talking about exactly?
Yeah, for, I'm recommending the building management system being upgraded. The, and the others are things that are board prerogative that if you wanted to do, we wouldn't object to. But that's the one that I think has the biggest impact to the greatest number of people.
And so that rounding up is forty-three thousand dollars.
There are three separate components to the building management system.
Yeah, it, it shows on, on, on the spreadsheet. For those who don't have it in front of them, there's a, a front end for forty-three thousand. Then, you know, binocular controls for ninety-five thousand and then VAV box controls for eighty-one thousand. None of those are a hundred and twenty thousand or anything like the number I think I heard. So I don't want to what, what the correct sum is of which pieces of those components.
Michelle, can you clarify that?
So Steve, I might not be understanding the question. The total, the total BMS system upgrades would be about two hundred and twenty thousand. The three of those components together.
Okay, so you're talking about the whole kit and caboodle?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That was easy. Tim, do you want me to go on with the next thought or give whoever's up next a chance and then come back to me? Unmute, unmute.
Thank you. I'll let you keep going because you haven't really spoken up that much this evening. So go ahead.
Okay, so, so the next two parts are a brief lecture in history to the, to our board members and a brief lecture to the administrators. For years and years and years, we had this informal tradition where the board would look at the unassigned fund balance and spend roughly fifty percent of it on projects and return the other fifty percent to the taxpayers. As Adam's pointed out many times, what we do with the, the fund balance is completely the board's choice. And every board has had the, the chance to spend it all or spend none of it or where we settled, which was for years, which was fifty percent. And that was well received by the community. As you can imagine, some community members would like all the money back. Some community members want to support the school with the tax dollars that have been collected. So there's a broad range of opinions in the community about what to do with it. And the board, I think wisely, I was part of it, so I'll say wisely, compromised and went fifty-fifty. So in this case, we'd be going a little over that, but and if you break it down as Michelle correctly does to the expendable part and the unexpendable part, we would go, we'd go a hundred percent of the expendable part. So that's just a thought. And, and that, that thought comes from my own statement at the last meeting that I didn't want to spend any of this because I anticipate that the economy is going to be very bad for our taxpayers. And while a good use of the money is to fix long-standing problems in the school, a better use of the money is reduce the tax bills for the taxpayers, the community, in their communities next December would be the tax bill where this would show up as a savings. So that's just a bit of history for you all to take into your consideration about what to spend and how much to spend. And that's still weighing on my mind. The third bit is related to that, to the administrators. I'm not going to accuse anyone of anything here tonight of our current administrators, but I think over the years my experience has been needs in the school show up in the very, very first version, zero point one version of the budget that starts rolling up from individuals at the school level. And those needs get suppressed as they pass through up the chain of administrators. So they never get seen in, even in the first budget. So I don't know if this is true or not, but the example might be the famous picture of the broken lockers in the boys locker room where I, I could imagine, oh, I don't know for a fact, that for years that's been on someone's list of things to fix. And every year it, it gets knocked off before the board sees it because there are way more pressing problems than some broken lockers in the locker room that's really used. So without saying anything about it, what anyone here has done, that I think that's the nature of schools, every school, everywhere that boards don't see in proposed budgets, everything that, that individuals on the ground might want to fix in the school. So one of the things that, again, prior boards did from tradition, not because we need to, but it, it was a good system that I liked and I hope we will go forward in the future is. When we do spend the unexpendable fund balance, we spend it on things we were aware of in early budget passes that got eliminated later on in the budget cycle. So I would be happier if I, in this case, for example, if these building management system upgrades had been in version of the budget. And we all together said, great thing to do, not this year, it's a problem. And we all dropped it. Now we could be circling back to it now saying, we all thought it was a good idea and now we know we have the money to do it. Let's do it. Even part, would have at least part of the discussion we had in public and that helped the public understand our budget priorities. So my admonition to the administrators is tell us everything that needs to get fixed. Don't make judgments early. And the corollary to that, the board members is, don't be shocked when you see a budget that's gigantic because there's a lot of stuff that's accumulated over the years, like those boys lockers that has been just never made even the first cut. And we should be aware of it. It shouldn't take a picture on Facebook for us to get the message. So, and, end of lecture.
Elegantly put, Steve. Thank you. All right. Where am I at? Stephanie, and then I think Dave had his hand up. Then I think we should start to vote on what we would like to do. So Stephanie.
So I'm, I'm in agreement with what Amy said, that I think we definitely want to look at using this money for that HVAC system. We know it's something that needs done. Especially, I think, with the state that we're in and we know we're going to be probably needing to use that space when it's going to be warmer. And to have even the winter to be a comfortable temperature for everybody, I think it would be a smart thing to do overall. I do like the idea of what Dave said. If it's something I know we can't necessarily do next year because it's just, there's so much to consider. But even the following year is, you know, talking to the teachers and say, you know, maybe we don't have to have to add a teacher, but I know the teachers in their contract have, they can teach, what, four, four classes plus they have an advisory. If they do a fifth class, there's a bonus. Is there something that we could do and say, hey, maybe we have a fifth class of X. So the science classes overall are smaller. It's something to consider in the, in this coming year's budget. I, I kind of like that idea because I don't think Sohegan two point O is going to happen in the next two years with all the other joint facility projects going on. So it might be a way to at least help alleviate some of the concern for our teachers. And I would think most voters would understand why we're doing it if we hadn't increased the budget over something like that.
Dave, thank you, Stephanie. Dave, did you have one final comment?
Yeah, basically, I'm wondering if some of the, one of the other projects might fit in as well. And I'm wondering how comfortable Michelle is with the with, you know, the forecast of two ninety-one and how much variance that she would be comfortable with going into January, I'm sorry, June thirtieth. The other project I thought would be, it's, it's not a big project. I don't remember exactly what the dollars were, but it was a security camera in the back stairwell of the annex. And the reason why was because there were some, there was a, you know, occasionally some vandalism that goes on back there. There are also and I was just wondering if we could fit that. And I think it was ten thousand dollars or something like that. And if that would mean enough residual money to make Michelle comfortable on June thirtieth.
Michelle, do you want to answer that?
So the, the estimate for the camera is about fifty-eight hundred. What I would recommend is that the board, if you're approving projects, approve them in a priority order and authorize an amount up to, providing that there is funding available to cover the cost. Some of the items I can be pretty certain we would be able to cover, but as you get really close to the end of the year and using more of the funds, I would want to make sure that we were not in a position that we over expended.
Another point, if I could, is a lot of these numbers that Michelle has put together are budget numbers, meaning vendors give us numbers and we use them for budgeting purposes. And my gut, just from doing this for a while, is that especially on the building control side, those numbers look very high to me and that we would be able to potentially save some money there. So to, to Kathy's, to Kathy's point. To Michelle's point, it would make sense to have an up to number from the board with a prioritized list of projects and then let us manage that on your behalf.
Can I propose an up to number?
Go ahead.
Is there an amendment, Tim, to the, the current? I think the current position is basically is just, I think Amy just said the BMS, the building management system. Would you be opposed to including everything on the list, Amy, to up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, just, you know, just assuming that we can get the BMS down a little bit and then include whatever we need and leave a residual so that, you know, we, we don't chance going over, we don't want to go over. That's a big deal. Amy?
Yeah, that's acceptable.
Is two, two fifty the right number, Michelle? Or would you be comfortable with two seventy-five?
Okay, can we make note of this? More budget dollars? The, so the, the estimate in the year-end project list is two hundred, just shy of two hundred and twenty. And Adam was feeling that that number might be on the higher end. So I think if you're looking at that particular project, maybe approving up to two hundred and twenty would be sufficient.
Okay. Well, no, I'm saying there are other items on the list, Michelle.
Oh.
Including some of those to the extent that you and Adam are comfortable with that.
Okay.
Knock them all off if we can or knock some of them off if you, if you're comfortable with that amount of money at the end of the year.
All right, I understood the question. Yeah, if you wanted to approve an amount that's up to two fifty or two seventy-five and then give the order of priority for tackling the projects, we could assess where we are at the end.
So moved.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm sorry, Tim. Let me say it more clearly. I move that we support, you know, a, a number of spending up to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the end of the year funds, the unexpended fund balance. And that is at the discretion of the, of the superintendent. And that is at the discretion of the superintendent. How we make sure we're underneath that number. That'll give him some negotiating room with the vendors and stuff like that, which is always helpful.
Totally understand. Is there somebody that wants to second that?
Can you clarify that again?
Dave, can you clarify?
Yeah, rather than just approving the the building management system. And some number like $220,000, which I suspect like Adam does is high. Then we, that'll come down, that we approve a different number, which is a spend of up to $275,000. Knowing that our limit is, at this point, is 291, which is what Michelle forecasted the unspent fund balance to be. And that they are allowed to spend up to that. They are allowed to spend up to 275, leaving a residual of whatever the difference is. And at their discretion, you know, to see as much, to get as much of the products on our list as we possibly can. Rather than approve them individually and maybe not be able to fit them in, just let let them have the judgment and the and the. And the and the ability to make decisions on what actually gets done. Okay, I don't know, tell me if I'm wrong here, I don't know.
If if that's the board's motion and and board's desire, that's fine. What we will do is we will. Start with the building management system and do everything else we can within that, that that motion, if that's what's passed by the board.
So there's a motion on the floor, if there's a second, we can have some additional discussion, which I certainly want to have, so. Amy, is that a second?
Yeah, I'll make a second.
Okay, so it's been motioned by David, seconded by Amy. So now time for some additional discussion. I see Laura, your hand is up, but before I get to Laura. So I'm very much of the mindset. Back and forth as far as I feel that we. Should give money back to the taxpayers, I'm not advocating for all of it. That I was part of those boards where with, as Steve mentioned, we historically had a 50-50 split. Unfortunately, I think that the cost of some of these items, especially the BMS. Isn't that going to fit into 50% of that available money, even with some. I shouldn't say even, more than likely with some awesome negotiation, I doubt you're going to get to 50% of 291. And I don't want to just throw out all these lower priority projects just to spend money. I think we really have to go after the the higher value stuff, or more important, I should say. Because it's been talked about. I'll say ad nauseam almost, that the annex is and other building management systems. Areas are not up to where they need to be to have a good learning environment. So I would support that, but as far as going all the way up to 275, I'm not comfortable with that at this point. So Laura had her hand up, and then Stephanie.
At what point this extra. Maintenance fund that we have. Is it possible to put money into that maintenance fund?
No, that money can only go into that maintenance fund with a vote by the voters in margin.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Stephanie.
I would prefer that maybe we set a few of the priorities, like, you know. If we could just list like the BMS upgrade first and then have a discussion whether we want the. Security upgrades second would be my proposal. And then you could look at the locker rooms or the elevator or something, but I I think I'd like to have us a little bit of a priority on that. So my my suggestion is look at the, you know, definitely the BMS and then look at the security upgrades would be my suggestion.
Yeah, and my my third would be right where yours are, which would be locker room upgrades.
Okay, and I concur that you stick with the priority. After the clivia, science classrooms, obviously. Is that all the questions at the moment? Yeah, so any other discussion, again, I'm not 100%. Comfortable with, you know, spending almost all the money, it'd be nice to be able to provide some money back to the taxpayers. Especially if we can, you know, again, for me, getting that BMS system is something that's important. And I would advocate for doing that, and if we just keep it to that and to say. You know, not to exceed the $220,000, and maybe that gets down closer to the 200. Now we're talking, you know, sending back anywhere from 70,000 to 90,000 back to the taxpayers. And again, kind of getting some additional goodwill with with the tax base. I would be. Less comfortable spending all of it and then, you know, next. On the budget, not the budget, but maybe we have one, want a warrant article to raise more money for bigger projects. You know, it might quickly get voted down because of A, obviously, economic environment is huge. But B, because, you know, we're we're not being cognizant of our tax base. That's my two cents. Laura, I see your hand up. Go ahead, Laura.
Come back to me.
Okay, okay, anybody else have a question or comment? Dave? Yeah, mute, Dave.
I appreciate what you're saying, Tim, and but, you know, last year. We had, you know, $1.3 million unspent fund balance, but, you know, maybe 500,000 of that was revenue. And so the really the amount that we had was something around, you know, eight, $850,000. And we chose to spend none. So if you balance it off, the amount of difference that we're talking about this year. Is really insignificant relative to last year's ability to spend, which we chose not to. And we returned all of that money back to the taxpayers, so. I can't say the taxpayers would be unhappy about that. And and what I would say is the the residual projects that we have beyond the BMS system. Mount a couple hundred, maybe $110,000, and you average that out over the. The tax base that we're talking about is two towns. The amount is literally insignificant, you wouldn't even buy a cup of coffee with that at Starbucks, to be quite honest. So I appreciate the circ, you know, the circumspect nature of your comment, but it's, to me, it's not. You know, we had an opportunity and took the opportunity last year to return a whole bunch of money, and this year we're talking about. The difference between about $100,000 or so, I don't even know what the difference is, it's up, it'd be up to the board, up to the administration to decide that, so.
Okay, I thank you, I appreciate that, Dave, and I understand where you're coming from. Last year was an anomaly, and, you know, as we've all said, we didn't really have our ducks in row, so. Had we had those projects, some projects in front of us, I'm sure we would have spent some of that money. So I hear what you're saying. Laura had her hand up, did you want to? You're ready to to speak?
Yes, aren't we receiving money from the federal government that the high school has paid? For lunches and other food service? That we're not getting it this this calendar year, or this fiscal year for the school? But don't we have other revenues that are coming in that aren't included in this number that should be considered?
Oh, Michelle, answer.
So the numbers that I'm providing to you are on the operating budget. The food service program is a separate fund, if you will, operates like a mini business of its own. And the operating budget is responsible for ensuring that the food service program does not finish the year in a deficit. Given the the closure of facilities. We had been on track to have a very positive food service program here and a strong fund balance in that program. But there will be a loss in the program. So there's the revenue for food service goes into food service, the expenses for food service go into food service, and that's not. Funding that's available for use for the general operating activities of of the district.
I meant the CARE Act.
Yeah, at the SEU budget, we talked about the CARE Act funding and the. Specific funding under the CARE Act is not funding that is, for the most part, accessible to school districts. There are two sources of grant revenues that we anticipate. One, we've already received, which is pretty much for remote learning and will be used for ESY over the summer. And the other is a percentage of title, our Title I funding that we've not yet received that. Grant award, and again, that would be earmarked for specific expenditures. There are strings that come with those dollars and restrictions in terms of how they're used.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think the the motion is currently. To expand up to $275,000 and on the priority of projects that we just mentioned, BMS. Security items and then boys locker room. Does anybody have any other discussion, would like, do we want to move towards a vote? Do we want to amend to that in any way? Does anybody have any strong opinions about amending that number? Other than me?
Admit it, admit it, amend it.
No, I I mean, I want to, I'm just trying to be mindful of of all our constituents as well, so. Obviously, we're here to provide the. The best educational opportunities for our students, so that's really one of the top priorities. Secondarily would be to, you know, kind of get any monies back. So that's why I've been waffling, I would love to be able to give some back, but I'm okay. Doing, making some of these expenses, expenditures, rather. Steve?
So inspired by by Dave's comment about. The tax impact of of the expense. I went back and did a quick back of the envelope calculation, if I didn't miss a decimal point somewhere. We're talking about $45 for the average Amherst house if we spend nothing. So if we spend all the way up to, well, rounded 300,000, it would be $45 that we would be.
That we would not be giving back.
Would not, would not be giving back, so it is, given I just got my tax bill in the mail, it is an insignificant amount either way. I may be arguing what is essentially a moot point for most taxpayers.
Yeah, that, so thank you actually for doing that, I think it does bring that a. A bit of reality into the situation for $45 for a year, we can do lots of good stuff to the school, so. All right, I'm going to take. My, I'm going to reverse, I should say, my feelings as far as, you know, trying to tap down that number. I think spending up to 275 is reasonable, especially given that, you know. Even less a third of that, you get, you know, so if we save a third of that to give back to the taxpayers, that's $15, that's even less significant, so. Fine, does anybody else have any other questions, comments, concerns? No, all right, so let's take it to a vote, so the current motion to spend up to $275,000. And based, not based, but targeting the BMS system, the securities. Items and the boys locker room fix. So we have a first by David, a second, I think, was Amy? Yeah, okay, so we'll go to roll call vote, Dave?
Ken, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
And George?
Yes.
And Gronster, yes. Okay, so it's unanimous, so we will spend up to $275,000 or unspent. Unassigned fund balance towards those projects. Godspeed. And that takes us through our last few items, we have one more public comment section. I don't, I think there's maybe one person left, or two people left in. In the public, anybody wish to make a comment? Question? No? Okay, seeing none. Mister Superintendent, we do not have a non-public session for this evening, correct?
Oh, perhaps, I have one nomination to make, and then if the board members have any questions about that nomination, we could go into non-public to answer them. But I'm happy to make that nomination now, if that's all right with you.
Yeah, please go ahead.
All right, so we have an opening in the Assistant Dean of Students position. And I have asked Bill Hagan to stick around next year and reprise his role as an interim. Member of our administrative team, he has agreed to serve in that role, so. Believe it or not, Mike Berry and Bill Hagan have known each other for several years, and. Mike has also made this request to me that this would happen, that Bill would stick around for, on a one-year assignment in that. Role as Assistant Dean of Students. One of the reasons I think this is important for us to do is we've had several changes at Sohegan. Several changes on the administrative side, and keeping Bill around will help with that process. Another purpose for this move is we've had conversations as a board and a community about the number of administrative positions. We have at Sohegan, and I've asked Mike Berry to look at that as he begins his tenure with us. And while we're in a state of examining our administrative fleet of positions. I don't want to be hiring someone that we might potentially be making a change to their position a year from now, and thus. Have lured them here only to change the game on them after a few short months. The third reason is with changes to both the the campus monitor position. And the Assistant Dean of Students position, I think it's important to have consistency there and for Bill. To be a part of that process of evaluating how we move forward and filling those roles, and so. For that reason, I am placing into nomination Bill Hagan on an interim Assistant Dean of Students position. At a salary of $75,000, which is equivalent to what the previous person had in that role. So again, if the board, this is a reminder to the board, only I can make nominations to the board, and the board. Either has to make a motion to elect. That person and vote it down, vote down my nomination, or vote it forward and elect that person to that role. If you have any questions about the specific individual, you should make a motion to go into non-public to have that discussion, because we can't discuss it in public.
Great, thank you for all of that information, Laura's hand was up first and then Amy, so go ahead, Laura. Laura, you're up.
I think it would be consistent with other discussions we had to go to non-public.
Okay, we can certainly do that shortly. Amy, did you have something that you want to talk to prior to?
Yeah, this doesn't concern the nominee, it's more the job description. So I know we eliminated the campus monitor, and so this is replacing the assistant. Assistant Dean. Will this position incorporate the. Job responsibilities of the campus monitor as well, and and how will that work?
So that's something that, again, I've asked Mike to look at these things as he arrives, because we need. To ensure that we still have that monitoring of our campus done well, as as well as. Think about our administrative deployment in the future, so that's something. So that's something. And that's something that needs to be evaluated. And one thing I want to make clear, I didn't, I never get these positions right. It's Assistant to the Dean of Students, not Assistant Dean of Students. So it's not even technically an administrative position. I want to be clear about that. This position doesn't require a certification and thus doesn't necessarily require a board approval. But I thought, given the changes that we've made and the discussions we've had about other administrative positions, I still thought I would bring this forward to the board for approval, really as a courtesy and out of respect for some of the concerns that were raised during the principal search process. But I want to make that clear as well.
Thank you for that. Okay, Dave had his hand raised. You have something in public you want to mention?
And this is a question really I had to direct it at Bill. Bill, when you took the principal's job, I think it was a four-day-a-week job, correct?
No, that, it was under the retirement rules, I have to work thirty, just under 30 hours, spread out over whatever period of time. So basically, what I did was I served at the need of the building. And so sometimes that was five days, sometimes that was four days. If we had multiple board meetings in the evening, that might have been a four-day week. So but basically, it's, I have to work under the rules of just under, just basically 30 hours a week.
So is that, well, never mind, I'll wait to unplug if we go to that.
Okay, any other questions while we're in public? Okay, so is there a motion to go into non-public?
All motion.
Okay, I have a second.
Okay.
Eighty seconds. Okay, we'll do a quick roll call vote. Dave?
Yes.
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund, yes.
Laura?
Taylor, yes.
George?
Doris, yes.
And Gronster, yes. Okay, so regular meeting is adjourned. We'll go to the breakout room and go into non-public. All right, thanks for everybody else that was here and helping us out, and good luck.
Yes.
Okay, everybody back?
We're the only people.
Do we want to seal the minutes too?
I think the minutes only need to say a personnel matter was discussed, in which case you won't need to seal the minutes, there was no action taken, so. As long as the minutes only say a personnel matter was discussed, you don't need to seal them.
Thank you, okay.
But I'm not the board secretary, so the board secretary needs to weigh in on what those minutes will be.
Well, that's the question, I, we're supposed to start taking more detail of minutes than they used to be, like there's something changing with RFA on that. That true or not?
I actually don't know that to be the case.
There was something discussed at the school board, at the New Hampshire School Board Association thing, that there's coming down the pipeline that we might, in non-public, we might need to start taking more detail, but I don't know where that stands exactly.
Yeah, I think you might be right, Stephanie, I remember seeing something about that, but I don't think that's been enacted yet.
Yeah, that's what I'm sure.
But it's not a bad practice, so go ahead and seal the minutes, that's, if that's, that's probably better practice anyhow.
Why is two thirds vote?
In the statewide decision. Okay, so Amy, did you want to make that motion, or Dave just raised your hand?
Oh. Go ahead, Dave.
No, I was just asking, making sure, I want, Amy, you started to make the motion, so I would like.
Okay, alright.
I want to, hold on, but I want to clarify with Dave, did you have anything else you wanted to say first?
No, I was gonna make the motion.
Okay, so Amy, go ahead and make the motion, Dave, you can second.
My guess.
Alright, I make, I make a motion to accept Superintendent Steele's recommendation to appoint Bill Hagan as the Assistant to the Dean of Students.
Okay, and seconded by Dave?
I thought the motion was gonna be to seal the minutes, I'm sorry.
Oh. No, I, no, you're, so you're, you're spot on, Dave, I had forgotten, so we first, I guess we do have to take a motion for that, so hold that motion, that motion is still on the floor.
I might be able to repeat that.
No, it's okay, your, your motion is still on the floor, so Dave, go ahead, you can, do we have to actually finish a motion before we have another motion?
You can do whatever you want, it's late.
Good, then, then, let me, hold on, in the. To expedite this a little bit, slightly faster, let's go ahead and, and make the motion to seal the minutes, so Dave is making that motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Steve, seconds, quick roll call, Dave?
Bennett, yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund yes.
Laura?
Taylor yes.
George?
Torres yes.
And Gronster, yes, okay, so seven nothing.
And just to be here, the motion does need to say the reason, the purpose for why you're sealing the minutes, which is because it would affect the reputation of someone adversely who's not a member of the board, so if that motion in the minutes could just include that phrase, that'd be great.
Okay, got, you have that stuff?
All set.
Okay, awesome, now we have a motion on the floor, do I have a second to Amy's motion?
A second.
Alright, Steve seconds, alright, now do a roll call vote, Dave?
Then yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund yes.
Laura?
Taylor no.
George?
Yes.
Gronster, yes, so six positives affirmative and one negative vote, so six to one passes. Okay. Anything else to discuss, any concerns, questions in our meeting, Dave?
I know we're having a meeting later this summer on competence-based education. I, I'd really like to get an update on the dual enrollment plan and where that stands, choices, why, you know, all that, the background of all that, because I feel like, you know, the last thing I knew, we were gonna do dual enrollment with NCC or something like that, but maybe that was, because I don't remember a lot of stuff.
Yeah, so I think that's gonna be part of that same discussion, right Adam?
Yeah, well, and I'll tell you, Dave, nothing has happened, we've been, we've been COVID-19 immersed the last several months, and we are, we've worked with Southern New Hampshire University, but we've not followed up for months on that, because we've all been underwater.
Adam, I did share with them all of our competencies and standards, so that was kind of where we had left off, and I had shared that probably early when we went into our remote learning, and I think they've been probably as busy as we have in our transition. But we can certainly reach back out soon when things settle.
And no changes will happen without board involvement on any of those things, so.
Okay, Laura, you have your hand.
I, I'm sorry to ask, but Christine, are you sharing the syllabuses from our classes, and do they have a, like a nondisclosure agreement, or what kind of agreement do they have with them to protect that they're not selling our, I don't know, our intellectual property?
So it wasn't our syllabi that I shared, it was actually the alignment between our courses, what competencies they covered, and then what standards they covered, which is, you know, something that is a pretty typical thing to share, nothing that's, you know, it's a little unique for South Pegan as to how we built our, our competencies and our standards, but that's something that, you know, I have all of our competencies on our website, and all of the alignment to the standards, it's available to every student and parent through Empower, so felt comfortable that that was appropriate to share with Snow.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain one last motion. Anyone? Steve?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, I have a second, second by Amy, okay, Dave?
Yes, then yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Amy?
ACS.
Stephanie?
Grund yes.
Laura?
Taylor yes.
George?
Torres yes.
And Gronster, yes, okay. We are adjourned, thank you so much, everybody.